So, one of the things that we do is we invite you here. Sometimes the school committee, you don't need to have a speech at all, but sometimes the school committee members like to ask you a couple of questions to find out what your experience has been like as a student because, you know, in no time, I mean, it seems like a long time for you, but for the adults in the room, it's like it's in no time you're gonna, you're gonna be leaving Westford Public Schools. But before we present the actual awards to them, we have Kaylee and Sahil, who are the two award recipients this evening. I would love to kind of kick it off by just asking you if there was a moment that jumps out to you in your experience in Westford as, whether it's just a really fond memory or an inspiring moment that you've had in a classroom while you've been here? Would either one of you have something like that that you could share with us?
I'll go first.
Ever the gentleman.
Right?
I'm not really sure.
That's totally fair, because I didn't tell you we were gonna do this to you. And that, and I acknowledge that, yeah. What about, what do you have Sahil?
Yeah, for me, I'm part of DECA, so I've been able to go to different places, for example Anaheim, Orlando, and Atlanta with my friends. For example with Daniel right there, I guess having fun with him is kind of what my highlight of my experience in high school is.
Okay, alright, okay. If there was, if there was any, even just a class that you've taken that you didn't necessarily expect to be something that you enjoyed, that's always something that I'm interested in hearing about too, right? Because sometimes we have like a course planned out and we're like, oh, I want to take these classes. I'm curious if there's ever anything that you've experienced in a classroom where you're like, huh, I didn't really think I would enjoy that, but then I did. Anything like that?
For me, I really liked AP Statistics. I wasn't really expecting to enjoy it when I decided to take it, but it was really interesting because it's super applicable to a lot of different things in everyday life, and I really enjoyed the class.
So I can relate to that, because I would not think that I would enjoy AP Statistics. Are there any questions that any of the school committee members would have?
I'm just interested in actually what have you loved taking the, you know, that was one of my other questions. But like, is it just a subject you really enjoy and you would study it all the time if you could?
I mean, for me, I loved AP Chemistry with Mr. Nittle. I guess all like the labs in class were really fun to do, like the titration lab and other kind of labs like that. But I would say, I'm not hoping to major in chem, but I loved chem in Westford Academy and learning from such a great teacher like Mr. Nittle.
I would say the same. I really like all my science classes, AP Chemistry with Mr. Nittle, and also honors physics with Mr. Burns last year was really fun.
Cool. If you were going to give advice to a new Westford Academy student coming from eighth grade, what would you tell them? Any particular advice that you would give?
Say, have fun is a pretty cliche one, but like, school goes by pretty quickly, so I guess make some memories with all your friends and your classes and stuff, and have fun in general.
Okay, yeah. Do you feel like you've had fun in the last four years?
I would say so, yeah.
I'm surprised you've had time to have fun considering the awards you're getting tonight, so that's impressive. I have one other question. I was thinking, you know, we talk a lot about having our students feel that they belong and that there's a sense of belonging, that we're a community. You know, in the, in the time you've been, just in the schools in general, not even just the academy, you know, what would you say, or was there any kind of moment, group, team experience that kind of gave you that sense of, you know, feeling of community and, and kind of that sense of belonging and you're a part of, of something, you know, that you'll appreciate?
For me, last year when we were in chemistry, we worked on a drug project together.
Oh, wow.
Where we all filmed like a parody of a drug commercial. And it was really fun. I got to collaborate with a lot of the other people in the class and I had a really good time, so for me.
I need to see that, that commercial.
That's really creative.
I think for me, I think being part of many clubs like swimming or DECA or student councils, all like fun making memories there and forming like a family of sorts with all these different people of different backgrounds.
That's great, thank you. Did you have something?
They asked questions ahead.
I think that's pretty much it. We, we don't want to grill ya.
No, no, I know, I tend to make it, right.
We do like to hear it when students.
So we congratulate both of you. I have a certificate for each one of you. This one's for Kaylee. And it'll say that it'll, it's a certificate of academic excellence from the, the association and then, well, I signed it there as a member there, right, so that one there is for you. And Sahil, this one's for you.
Alright, thank you so much.
And it's the same thing. Congratulations to both of you. Thank you for all of the work that you've done. Thank you for, I think, the, the model that you present to the student body. And we wish you all the best as you continue your senior year here and continue to have fun and continue to enjoy the work.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We can have everybody. We can have the school committee.
But it's the superintendent tomorrow, isn't it?
It is, that's true, that's true. We could do that, we could do that. Where's the good background?
Kathy's good with the pictures.
There you go. That'll look like a D M B photo.
Westford logos for these moments.
How about with the two students? Who do you want, the two students, you know, the two students? Sahil, one with the. Thank you.
Thank you both. Congratulations. Enjoy.
One more. No, no, one more with Kaylee.
Thank you for coming. Feel free to stick around or.
Or not.
Or not. In other ways. Thank you.
Thank you.
And congratulations again.
Thanks so much.
Happy Thanksgiving. Happy Thanksgiving. Bye bye.
Next up is public comment. A reminder that public comment for any item or topic on or off the agenda is always available near the top of the agenda for individuals to share their thoughts. Speakers will be limited to two minutes per person. Please use public comment even if you refer to something later on the agenda. Virtual public comment is available through Zoom, so raise your hand and you'll be promoted to a panelist and unmuted or in person at the microphone at Millennium Room, Conference Room B. Go ahead, sure. One on line?
Yep.
Whenever you're ready, Wendy.
Okay. Wendy Gloyd, 16 Pleasant Street. I'm here on behalf of the Westford LGBTQ Friends and Allies Group on Facebook to share a few brief comments. First of all, I want to express our gratitude to the school committee for the policies working group and the Westford School Committee for their efforts in updating key policies, specifically ones that are going to be mentioned later in tonight's meeting. The non-discrimination and harassment policy and the transgender and gender non-conforming student policies. These policies align with the guidance provided by Massachusetts Public Schools for fostering a safe and supportive educational environment for gender expansive youth. Every individual attending public and private school in Massachusetts deserves a school and a district administration that cultivates a culture where transgender and gender expansive youth feel safe, supported, and fully included. Moreover, it is essential that students are protected from being outed by their, to their families by school staff regarding their gender identity, pronouns, and chosen names that they use in the school system. The Safe Schools Program was established back in 1993 and was created to address the bullying and suicide risks faced by LGBTQ youth in public schools. And I appreciate your commitment to these vital issues. The LGBTQ community is deeply concerned about President-elect Trump's threats to roll back rights for our community. His administration's proposals to limit access to gender-affirming care prevent transgender athletes from participating in sports and promising to sign executive orders that will cut funding for essential gender-affirming services could have devastating impacts on the lives of transgender and gender expansive individuals across the country. We are committed to advocating for those rights and the well-being of all members of our community as we face these challenges. Thank you.
Thanks Wendy. Anyone else in, anyone else in the room? And we have my hand online? Christina, whenever you're unmuted, go ahead.
She should be coming in there now. Christina?
Hi, thank you. Christina Green, and I am a member of Finance Committee, but I'm speaking just as an individual. I had some comments on the Non-General Fund Guidebook that you're going to be discussing tonight, and I just wanted to give, have this opportunity to give a couple of comments and, and thoughts for you to consider as you talk about this. First off, this guidebook is super, super helpful, so thank you so, so much for putting it together. My first comment is, when reviewing these funds, it's helpful to know for the current year, which in this case is FY25, what the budgeted revenue and expenses are in addition to the end-of-year balance. And also the same for the upcoming year, meaning like FY26. I know fitting those on that page may be a challenge, the way it's out right now. But a thought is that the older history, so like FY23 and earlier, could really be put in an appendix and just sort of concentrate on the prior year's actuals, the current year, and then the, the future year. Jenny usually gives us this information because we always ask for it every, every year, so I know there is a spreadsheet that's available to pull from. Secondly, when there's an increase in the offset, it would be helpful to know why. Like, did you remember the expenses increase? Or is there excess balance you're needing to use, you know, what's the reason for the, for the increase? Or decrease, I guess, in that sense as well. And third and final is, the Finance Committee is also interested in knowing whether fees are covering expenses for a particular service, and that goes across the whole town. So, my question is, will that analysis be added to this book under the particular revolving funds that fees may be deposited into? Or will that be provided and performed and given out at another time? Those are the comments I had, so thank you very much.
Thanks Christina.
Thank you.
Anybody else on Zoom? No hands? Okay, great. Thank you. We're gonna move on to informational updates. I was gonna try something different and have the students go first. We don't steal any
That's a great idea.
updates from them this time. I meant to give you a warning. But you look ready, so let's start with the students today.
So first I can start with, again, I know we've talked a lot about Harry Potter, which rightfully so. But this morning, Mr. Toomey told me that it was the most, the Harry Potter shows were most people in attendance ever at a WA event, which is just, I think, incredible. The show was amazing. It was quite a success. They should be very proud. And then we also had the MGH blood drive last Tuesday, 11:19, that was last week, right? And every spot was filled, so it was very successful, great turnout. Whether it was to, you know, help people, whether it was to truly give blood or skip class, it worked and people, it worked, it was very successful. We also have the football game this Friday at 10 o'clock at Westford Academy versus AB. That'll be an awesome game, dress worn? Thursday, Thursday, sorry. Thursday, Thursday at 10. We also have the Holiday Bazaar December 7th, 9 to 3. Again, I know I keep saying parking will be crazy. I'm sure that the town is, is, is working with that, where people can park and that's who your guys is in. But just, you know, a general note, get there early and expect to be looking for parking for a while. And then we also have the winter concert that night from 7 to 9 at WA in the PAC. That is open to the public. And then we also have Advisory Number 3, I forget the day, I believe it is next week. So just an update on students, we'll have a different schedule and just progression, progression of the year. And yeah, we're all excited to break for Thanksgiving on Wednesday. Oh, so we also have a unified, unified basketball game versus the teachers. I believe it's teachers and then unified basketball. That is the last two blocks on Wednesday, the half-day. And that is a highly anticipated game, very excited to watch it. So. That was it for me.
Before I go on to the rest of my updates, I just want to give a special shout out to Sahil and Kaylee. Over the past few years, I've been in a few of their classes and they're seriously some of the most hardworking students that I know of, and so they 100% deserve these awards. So again, congratulations to them. So on with the rest of my updates. There was a mini-advisory last Wednesday where students had the opportunity to take a panorama survey where they answered questions regarding like student support systems in WA and how they feel about their classes. Stuka will also be hosting a donut fundraiser, which is basically like a bake sale in support of Massachusetts Special Olympics on Wednesday. There's also been talks about hosting the Polar Punch at Westford Academy. It's basically a fundraiser for the Massachusetts Special Olympics. This is honestly just a great opportunity as it allows more Westford Academy student organizations to participate in this great cause. Lastly, like Maddie mentioned, the Holiday Bazaar, I just have a couple of things to add to that. I believe there are layout changes, because there are so many vendors that are coming this year. I believe it's expanded to the flag lobby in the language hall, if I'm not mistaken. Admission is, I believe, $2 or $3 and kids, I don't know exactly what the cutoff age is, as well as senior citizens will also have free admission. And make sure to bring cash, A for admissions and B, not all the vendors have card readers and the internet is, it's not the best and.
Venmo does not work.
Yeah, there's, there's been issues in the past, so cash is always the safest option.
Thanks. Okay, should we go in reverse order and leave the administration for last? Superintendent, I mean, school committee updates. Tom, do you have anything?
The Graduation Requirements Working Group, I think is the correct name of it, continues to meet. We are really working to balance student choice and equity and, you know, hope to have something before this committee, I believe, next month. Of course, next month is also next week, but no. Yeah, I believe the plan is to have something before the school committee, hopefully in December, before the budget really starts to, to take our full attention.
Great, thank you.
I attended the board meeting on the 22nd of November for the Westford CAT. They are involved in creating a strategic plan for the future. One of their concerns is that their funding is diminishing through the cable TV, FiOS and Comcast as people switch over to streaming. So they're looking at different ways to create fundraising and be supported. And they're also noting that they have three years left on their lease, as I mentioned before. So they're looking for a different, a space for the future, so that's things they're working on. Brainstorming a, a vision for the next several years.
Okay. Excellent.
I'm going, Bill's not here this evening, so I just sort of give a quick update on later school start times. We met again last week. We're obviously powering through to our December presentation. We finally got kind of some, you know, more detailed data that we've been looking at on the bus route, so we're currently having a deep dive into those and how they, they look. But I did want to just take a kind of a minute, based on some conversations that some community members were, were having regarding, you know, how does the subcommittee work? I think it's just important to reiterate for anyone listening tonight, again, the subcommittees are very much a working group. And, you know, any, there's no decisions made in those groups. Everything comes to school committee in the sense of, that's when we will start the conversations, present the information and any documents that we have, and that's really when the conversation can really begin. And we, we will plan to have a lot of public feedback, mainly during January, before there's any sort of vote or potential vote decision made. And there was also some concerns regarding the impact on athletics. And in one of our previous meetings a couple of weeks ago, our athletic director, Jeff Bunyan, had come, had joined us and we spoke to him in depth. But I know there was some parents very concerned and students, and I did kind of want to just put that out there, that we'd had a really good conversation with him and that he felt the potential changes were very doable and manageable for the athletics. So I just felt, just to take this evening. But it's very much a work in progress and we will be back in December.
Yep, thank you. Anything online? Dates?
Sean, yeah.
Hey guys, real quick, I won't steal our stickers there. Catherine is wearing yellow and I am not. CPAC is November Awareness Month, hence the yellow attire. I, I completely broke the ball on this and I'm very happy that Danielle and Melissa cannot see me, so.
They actually can, you're up on the main screen. You're on the projector.
It was a joke, I know. It's a very bad joke.
Okay, I have no updates, so we'll move on to Superintendent.
I went with yellow earlens. The yellow earrings and the yellow shirt. I was all excited about CPAC. The, so we had two groups of former middle school students who are now WA freshmen who were invited to present their civic action projects at the National Conference for Social Studies that took place in Boston this year. So they had presented, if you remember, last year we'd actually talked about it, because these two groups of students presented at the mass conference when they were looking at the civic act, the civic action project throughout the state. And because of the commendations that they received, they were invited to go to Boston. So this last Saturday, they presented in Boston. And so the students, there was one team that was from Blanchard and one team that was from Stony Brook. The Blanchard team was Evelyn Hamalainen, Charlotte Ruther, Lily Patterson, Sruti Viswanada, and Anvi Polisetti. And their project was entitled "A Woman's Worth: Understanding the Experience of Female Employees." It examined gender discrimination in the workplace and suggested legislative solutions to the problem. The Stony Brook students were Havish Kohli, Veer Patel, and Sayen Rao. And their project was, what would it take to reduce Westford's carbon emissions? So the fact that they were invited to present these after the presentations that they had done in the spring, I think, was excellent. And so they had that opportunity on this last Saturday, so we congratulate all of them and thank them for the work.
Last but not least, I only lost two, two bullet points, so that's fine. But for the past few years, the, the Westford PD has extended an outreach to our elementary students by doing a holiday high-five to students the day before Thanksgiving break. So that's going to continue this Wednesday. There will be extra police presence at each of the middle, elementary schools, but for good reason, to connect with our students and to give them their holiday high-five. At the Blanchard School, the Blanchard Theater Arts presents Into the Woods Junior. Tickets will go on sale this weekend for performances that are scheduled Thursday, December 5th through Saturday, December 7th. Ticket information was available in Mr. Hislop's weekly newsletter and a link will also be available on their website. Mrs. Larkin and Mrs. Leoni over at Stony Brook organized a very successful eighth-grade trip to the State House this past week. They were able to visit the House Chamber and included a nice visit and discussion with Representative Arciero, so that was very successful. And just a quick, couple athletic updates, the Westford Girls Cross Country Team did win the W, uh, W, no, we're not doing wrestling. M I A A. Division State One Championship last week. This was a first win for our Westford Academy Cross Country Team. And Jack Graffeo from the Boys did win first place on that championship. That's it.
Awesome, thank you. So we're gonna move on to our business agenda and the first order is.
I'm sorry, can I ask you a quick question?
Yep.
I wanted, I had seen online that the students got to go to the State House. I thought that was awesome, as someone who spends a lot of time at, at the State House. Is there any plan to have Blanchard go as well, or is it just Stony students?
That's a good question. We don't know. I don't know.
I haven't, I don't believe I've signed off on any field trip request, but I can follow up with Blanchard and get back to you on that.
I was just curious, because when I, I didn't know online that it was one of the middle schools going and I didn't know if there was plans to have the other middle school be able to go as well. Thank you for answering my question.
And those are originated by the building staff, yeah, it's not like a district, yeah.
And it appeared like all eighth graders were there. They seemed to take up the entire building of, of Stony Brook, yeah.
So now we will welcome our CPAC representatives to the table to give our annual CPAC update in honor of CPAC Awareness Month, the month of November.
We wore yellow at our CPAC meeting earlier this month, so we haven't taken out the dryer yet. Sean called us out on that.
All right, well, thank you so much for having us this evening. The last time we were here was in June and that's when we gave our annual survey presentation to you. Tonight's presentation is just gonna highlight what the CPAC is, what we do, some of our goals, and the ongoing efforts we have that support, enhance support for students with disabilities in the community. My name is Melissa Mackey. I'm the chair for the CPAC. And then Lisa Studer, who can't be with us this evening, is the vice chair. And then Danielle Thompson, who's with me this evening, is our secretary treasurer. And then, of course, Sean Kelly, who is our school committee liaison. He's been our liaison for the last few years. Thank you, Sean. He's been attending the CPAC meetings and he, it's really important to offer that bridge between families and the school committee. And that's right there on the bottom, sorry about that.
Oh, sorry.
No, it's my fault, because I kind of go slow. That's just some contact information for you. And there'll be some more at the end. And yeah, so it is November, it's CPAC Awareness Month. And this was started in 2019 by some of our own CPAC, Westward CPAC members. It's a proclamation that's signed at the State House by the governor's office. It makes November CPAC Awareness Month. And what this does is it highlights the importance of supporting children or young adults with disabilities. It raises awareness about special education needs and it encourages families and educators to come together in advocacy and collaboration. So just briefly, we'll talk a little bit about what is a CPAC and what, and what do we do? First off, it is a mandatory yet volunteer organization, which I think is two words that don't go side by side, but that's how it is. Ideally, it's a parent-led organization that works to improve the educational experience of students with disabilities. Every school district in the state of Massachusetts is required to have a CPAC. If you don't have a CPAC, or parents to lead your CPAC, then the district themselves must create one. The Massachusetts law assigns us duties, both advisory and participatory. We advise the school committee on matters that pertain to the education and safety of students with disabilities. And then we meet regularly with school officials to take part in the planning, development, and evaluation of our district's special education program. And then every year we are required in cooperation, or the district in cooperation with the CPAC to conduct at least one workshop within the district on the rights of students and their parents under state and federal special education laws. Under the law, CPACs are empowered to be self-governed, and so we have established our own operational procedures and bylaws so that we remain parent-driven, parent-led, and parent-organized. We focus on enhancing collaboration between parents, educators, and the broader community. We provide informational forums and we promote programs that encourage the understanding and acceptance of children and students with disabilities. More than anything, we like to ground ourselves as a resource for, and support for families. So just briefly, we'll talk a little bit. So just briefly, we'll talk a little bit about what we, we did last year, year in review. Our programming is a combination of meetings and workshops and speaker events. These workshops and events, they're, they're meant to help educate parents as well as our educators on topics that are important or relevant to special education, disabilities and/or inclusion. So these are some of the things we did last year. We had some, Kristen Jacobson from Cognitive Connections come and speak on executive functioning. That's a topic that many of our parents have mentioned needing to, to learn more about and having more supports in. We had Magali Rodriguez Ronan come and speak about UDL. That's Universal Design for Learning. This is a district initiative to bring that to all students in Westford. And so we, as a CPAC, wanted to educate our families more on what that is and how that can impact equity for all students, but especially those with disabilities. You see, in January last year, we did have that basic rights workshop with the Federation, and I'll talk a little bit more about that coming up. Also, in February last year, we had Fern Bork from Landmark College come and talk about navigating the college search for those who learn differently. College is available for a variety of learners. And there are many universities out there that have a wide range of supports that are available for students and those with disabilities as well. And so then in March last year, we had a move-up there. This is something we do every other year. This is for our students who are moving up to a new school. So think that second grade to third grade, the fifth grade to sixth grade transition, and then that eighth to ninth. We do also offer it for pre-K to K, but now that pre-K is sort of embedded in those elementary schools, it's not as, as big as a change. And I'll say here, the majority of parents that show up is that fifth to sixth grade transition. That seems to be when the special education, just the way it's delivered is significantly different in middle school than elementary. And then March through June, we are conducting our annual survey that I'll talk a little bit more about later. We begin that in March, end it in June when we present our findings here to the school committee. And we establish our goals and initiatives at the end of the previous year to drive forward for the next year. So somewhat similar to the school improvement plans. And so, yeah, we'll just briefly discuss our survey here. A CPAC is only as successful as its ability to gather information from our families. We want to shape this information into concrete issues and then offer that back to district decision-makers with possible solutions and the hope is positive changes in programs and policies or procedures. And so in an effort to gather as much information from our family as, as possible, we do create and conduct this annual survey for our parents. And the purpose of which is to get that, gather that firsthand insight into the experiences, the successes, and the challenges that are faced by families of students with disabilities and their students. It helps the CPAC understand the effectiveness of our special education program, and it also helps us identify areas and needs for improvement. It ensures that the voices of our families are heard, and we are hopeful that this feedback is considered in this, in decision-making, or also in considered in just how best to support our families. So in 2023 and the 2024 school year, our findings of our surveys revealed that communication between schools and families have improved over time, with a notable percentage of parents expressing satisfaction. However, there is still room for progress. Thirty-two percent of our families felt that the school could provide more updates, while twenty-six percent indicated that the school rarely communicates unless they're prompted. A significant concern for approximately seventy percent of families was whether their children were being, receiving appropriate support or making effective progress. And so families highlighted issues around like the IEP not being consistently followed and insufficient updates on their child's progress. So many parents stress the need for greater communication and collaboration between home and school. They would like more transparency regarding the special education services that are being provided, as well as clearer guidance on how to navigate the special education process. Families express interest in receiving more detailed progress reports or more frequent updates on their child's progress. Additionally, the survey revealed that parents emphasize the importance of teacher and staff receiving adequate training to effectively support the wide range of learners and accommodate individual needs within the classroom. So, as well as parents wanted to see more enhanced inclusion efforts for students with special needs in the after-school programs. So, actually, I think we're up back on that last slide. So I wanted to talk about this one, yeah, right there. Parents would like to see more support for special needs students after-school programs. Here, I just want to bring up the, the Unified Sports that's going on. That came just last year and it already feels like it's got so much great momentum. Got a lot of participation this year. And what I have heard from, so, and it was that student section that you got filled as well. So I had another CPAC contact me saying, "How did you get that to happen?" And, you know, it just shows that it's, it's everybody together, right? It was administrators, it was staff, it was students making that possible and everybody coming together to support one another. And it was just really beautiful. And it's a great way that we can show how we can support these students in these extracurricular activities. Now we can move on. So in order to address some of these concerns that we talked about, the CPAC collaborated with parents, with educators, and our school officials to put forth some recommendations. Yeah, there we are. And so the CPAC believes that equipping teachers with the tools and knowledge they need is essential for creating a supportive and inclusive learning environment. And so we talk about increased training for education, educators in areas like executive functioning, which was something that was brought to our attention from, from our families, as well as social, emotional support and mental health, and also universal design for learning, which is something that the CPAC brought up. So we are aware of the district's work towards bringing UDL to Westford Public Schools, including the professional development schedule for this year for all grades, as well as training for professional and support staff. And so this is a really important initiative for the district to take. When UDL is done well, it really does bring equity to our district. So we also talked about, let's stay back on that lesson.
Sorry.
Yep. We also talked about increased opportunities for communication. Some of those areas. Provide clear program descriptions. So the program descriptions would be like our sub-separate classrooms. Those are for students who are not able to learn in the general education classroom. And so these, we, we brought these up, and those are now available on the district's website. And so this is a really great response to this need. And what this does is it helps bring, or it helps support decision-making for staff and families when we're talking about placement for these students. So it's great that they're there. It can give a lot, it can give information. I think there is still more room for expansion on these and, and growth to include defining the program goals, the student profile, maybe entry or exit criteria. And then we also did bring up about a two-year review process possible for these in order to ensure that the programs remain relevant, that they are effective and responsive, as well as accountable. They should be updated in a, in a two-year review process in order to also reflect the change you need to, for student population. Some of the other things we suggested were development of easy-to-understand guides and resources for parents, including frequently asked questions, who-to-contact flow charts, things that help parents navigate the system and know who to reach out to when they need support or information. And so here, Melissa Richard at the Abbott School, she sort of heard some of this feedback, and she has created a wonderful document that is a parent's guide to the IEP process. And so what she's done is she's taken, which is a lot of information, and she's chunked it into really nice, digestible, easy-to-absorb information for families. And so it's funny, because we talk about UDL, and it's like, hey, we all need it, you know? It helps bring information into more accessible forms. And so she's really created that. I think she's done a sort of soft launch there at school, at her school, and hopeful, I'm hopeful that she shares that with the other schools, because it really is a great resource for families. And the new IEP presentation, which is on, going to be on December 5th, this is hosted by the Office of Special Education. This is a really great opportunity to increase communication with families and to increase engagement. So it brings families and the district together that helps build these relationships. This is going to be hosted in person at the Blanchard School. Great opportunity for families to ask their questions directly to members of our special education team. We also, as, offered the option of utilizing an inclusion specialist to support teachers and staff in designing modifications and strategies for students with unique learning profiles. So this is to help keep our kids with disabilities learning alongside their non-disabled peers. Inclusion specialists can provide ongoing coaching and support to classroom teachers, helping them adapt their instructional practices to meet the needs of all learners and to promote meaningful engagement in the classroom for our, all students. So looking forward, the CPAC, some of our goals for us, we are committed to continuing our advisory role by providing families a platform to share their experiences and their concerns. We also focus on expanding our outreach efforts to ensure that more families are aware of and involved in CPAC activities. And we meet regularly with the Office of Special Education and Social Emotional Learning to ensure that our CPAC remains active in that planning, development, and the evaluation of our special education program. Go ahead. Just a couple more here, guys. So just real briefly, what are we going to do for this school year? What have we done so far? Go to the next slide, please. So already, we've been working in August. We worked in advisory capacity. We were invited by Ms. Moran to attend this principal orientation, our new vice principal orientations for the pre-K through to elementaries, vice principals. We were able to share parent input and perspective on that team meeting process. In September, we met with Gerard Coughlin in the Office of Special Education. October was our first CPAC meeting, and then we had another one in November. And this was the one where Superintendent Chu and Gerard Coughlin both attended. This was a great opportunity to engage directly with families. This helps build connections and foster trust. So when you show that you're willing to listen to the concerns of parents, answer their questions, it really shows that you're committed to having a collaborative relationship and supportive of our efforts. Thank you for attending that. Really, it's well-received. I'm sorry.
December 6th.
Oh, so on the 5th, we are taking part in the advisory capacity.
October 6th.
Oh, the Equity Audit is the 6th?
It's just the next day.
It's Friday.
Same idea.
Yes. So we're taking part in the Equity Audit, Root Clause of CPAC. So I love where that fits, 6th. Okay, we'll get that figured out. And so, again, that's part of our advisory capacity. In January, we'll be having the Basic Rights Workshop. So there's one taking place in December that's offered in person by this Office of Special Education. If you're not able to attend that, this one in January will be fully virtual. So we'll have both options for families this year. And then March through June is that annual survey that we talked about. We'll be getting, begin preparation in March. We open that survey around March and April. We compile all the data. We meet with membership where we create our recommendations. Then we meet with the Office of Special Education, and then we bring that here to school committee at the end of the year to fulfill that advisory duty that we mentioned earlier. And then here additionally, we will be hosting again our popular Community Lego Build for the second year. Last year was our first year doing it. It was a really great event we hosted during Neurodiversity Week. It was a free event facilitated by New England Lego User Group, aiming to bring together families and help promote awareness of neurodiversity in the community. It provided an opportunity for children and adults, because we all had a really good time building that, to engage in a fun and creative activity. It helped promote interact, social interaction and inclusion. We'll be doing that again this year. We are, yeah, great.
Doing the mosaic though this year.
Oh, mosaic, sounds interesting. It was a really good time. Excited. And then, yeah, so this is just the ways you can stay updated on upcoming events and activities. Families can connect with us through our Facebook page, our website, and our email. We encourage all parents of children with disabilities to get involved. However, our CPAC meetings and events are open to anyone who wants to attend or has an interest in special education. And I think that will be it. I think there's one. Yeah, there's questions if you have any or comments.
Thank you so much. Wonderful presentation. I'm sure there are some comments or questions from the committee. Go ahead, Tom.
First of all, thank you for being here, and thank you for what you do to support the community. My comments are around the making information available. I think that we are, we have talked about the website being a little bit hard to navigate at times. And I think it's very easy for us to say, oh, that information is on the website. So certainly, any feedback about placement, or if you're not able to find something, that, that's always good to hear so that we can, I say we, I'm speaking probably mostly for staff, to make it a little bit more available. I'm also glad that you brought up the, the experience with Abbott, that they're putting this, this together. And, and I would hope that it is collaborative and you can have that back and forth to kind of fine-tune what can be a model to be shared in, in the town. And I think it's a, it's a good collaborative effort. So I'm glad that you were able to highlight that.
Okay, thank you.
No, it's really great to have an opportunity to stop in the Abbott. She has it like, it's just on the table in the foyer, and then she has some also in the conference room where families meet to do their IEP meetings. So it's, it's been, it's been, it was really nice to see that the feedback was received and then also just how you can present it back to families, because it is a lot of information that gets given to families like every year, the procedures and safeguards. It's like a booklet of thirty pages, you know? It's just like a lot, and it's not very accessible, I think.
Digestible, yeah.
So it really was, it really is nice.
Are you, she's, are you going to follow up with Abbott on trying, on Melissa trying to share that?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
I could probably do it.
Any question, other questions or reactions? I don't want to miss, I can't see Mari and Sean.
I can see them. Neither have their hands up.
That looks like Sean, like.
No.
I was going to ask, I don't know if this is kind of a joint question, or how the, the sign-up office hours with Gerard Coughlin have been going? Have you been getting feedback? Or I guess the, another question would be if we know how, what, what usage participation it's been like.
You know, I mean, people have had the opportunities. I feel like people have been very happy with it.
Yeah, one, one aspect I, yeah, one aspect I will say is, having to say, yes, you can go and speak. I have already referred multiple parents, say, hey, there's office hours with the Director of Special Education. So that's already like a great opportunity. Parents know that they can go directly
Right.
to the Director or Office of Special Education to have their concerns heard. And a lot of times, that's where they need to go. If they're here at the school level and it's not working anymore, they do need to know there's another Abbott, there's another place that they can go and speak to. He has said that he, they're fairly full, that he's getting a lot of good response. And that, you know, as I said, I, I have offered it to a lot of parents to go and do, and so I think they are picking it up and utilizing it.
I can add too, that a lot of parents find it very convenient that, and I find it convenient as well, that I can go on the website, copy the link quickly from the website to immediately sign up and see what space is available for the, for the weeks coming forward. So it's, it's really nice that he doesn't, that people don't have to like email and wait for a response, right? Like, they can just click in real quick and it makes it very easy for us to share out to the community immediately to get that feedback. And I think even just if it's a half a dozen or a dozen families or individuals reaching out to us that say, I don't know, I'm just in this place, for us to have a resource to say, hey, there's open office hours. Like, you can ask anything you want, just to get more clarity or understanding on your situation has been pretty amazing for the community, so.
Great.
It's an opportunity to, again, build those relationships, build the trust, and I think just hear directly from families. You know, you need to hear what the experience is for, for some of, some of the families.
Yeah. Great, I'm glad.
Okay. I just wanted to, I, I'm delighted to see that the program descriptions have, have gone up, because that was something that came out that I think you've been working on the last year. And so that's great to see that there's progress. I'm just curious then, with the recommendations that do come out of the survey, is that something that you continue to work on with Gerard Coughlin as the year goes on and progresses? Because I would hate for them to kind of sit there and not kind of be, you know, worked on, thought about, considered as the year progresses. Or I'm just curious as to how those recommendations.
Yeah, absolutely. So we set them up in, they're sort of like in a chart of what all our recommendations are, and we push those through throughout the year. And so when we do our advisory meetings, we are checking back in on them. Some of them get like sort of checked off, some of them get checked off partially. Um, yeah, it's all just like a lot, what we are aiming towards. What I like about how we've created this goal, and we sort of created the way we've done the survey, is that we started at the end of the year so that we're ready to go as the year starts. And it's been great, because we already feel like some of those boxes have already been like ticked off. And so that feels very responsive and like that, we're, we're beating knowledge, I guess, in a little way, so.
It feels like the progress has, has really, like, the momentum has really kept rolling forward from the survey. And, like, I mean, you just said this, but the meeting with Gerard in August, like, prior to the school year, he's already able to update us on some of the progress, um, that's happening on the goals that we had recommended at the end of the year, um, and then what's coming up. So we can, um, follow up with that. So it's been great, yeah. Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks for having us. Appreciate the time.
Thank you so much for recognizing CPAC awareness, Ma.
Good time.
We will wear yellow next year.
Anytime, but we look forward to seeing you back for the survey.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, the next order of business, do we see Joe and Anjali online?
Uh, I'm just going into check.
Moving on to.
Yes, I have Joe and Anjali.
Perfect. Um, we're moving on to, uh, consideration for adding a student membership to the Town DEI Committee. Um, and we have the Town DEI Committee co-chairs, Joe Diamond and Anjali Rajput.
Yeah, they're just transferring in now.
Joining us as panelists. So, um, just to, for added context, for someone, if someone needs a reminder or if someone watching, um, the Town DEI Committee is jointly appointed. So this membership, um, seat has already been approved and considered, considered and approved by the Select Board and now is coming to us as well. So, oh, there we go.
Yep.
Welcome, Joe and Anjali. If you wanna just explain to the School Committee what is up for, um, vote tonight.
Absolutely. I'll just start. Uh, good evening. Hi, Anjali. First of all, um, we're grateful to be able to, to meet with you, um, and actually a little more frequently than, uh, than it would pass you. So that's, that's always, it's always a pleasure. Uh, and I must say that, um, much of what you've gone over today really syncs up with today's, or the requests that we have. Uh, the students that you honored, um, the presentation that you, that you've, uh, you know, provided to students, the specific action topics that you noted, uh, and CPAC, uh, all of which I think are really good context for the requests that we have to follow up on what, um, the Select Board has approved, which is a, a student seat on the DEI Committee. And I'll just, I'll, I'll turn over to Anjali just to get, uh, some of the specifics. We're talking about some of the specifics of that, of that seat.
Great.
Thank you, Joe. So what we are looking for presenting is an equal right to a student member who is either a junior or a senior, either in WA or another high school within the town or in nearby towns, or is probably doing a homeschooling, but is a member of the Westford community. And we would like to provide the opportunity for them, again, to be able to vote, have a voting right, and be a member for, until, until they are here, until they're here and not gone, because we have had those seats in the past, but students have done. So at least what we are looking for is having a seat. And then as we have the students in rotation, once they are gone, then we can accept and open it up for more applications in the future. So we are looking for your approval, just like, just because we are a jointly appointed committee. Select Board has already approved it, and we are hoping that we will get that same support from you all as well.
Great. Thank you. Does anybody on the committee have questions? Can you talk a little bit about, um, whether you have somebody interested or how you plan to advertise the position?
Three, two, sorry, Joe, go ahead.
Uh, no, we, we actually do have somebody interested, somebody who, uh, has approached us and has, and has made a, uh, a citizen, uh, activity form already. Uh, we wanted to talk with you all first to make sure that the seat was available. Sorry, Anjali.
So we're approving the seat first, but then do we approve the?
Person.
The person at a future meeting. Is that what you're asking for, Joe? Okay.
I think, yes. Actually, Anjali, I talked about this earlier, and I, I think that makes sense. Um, you know, make sure the seat's available, and then we would share that citizen activity form with the committee, uh, and then come back to you for, for approval.
Any other reactions?
That's absolutely, Joe. Yep, that's exactly what we are looking for initially, for a seat, for now.
Okay. Any other reactions or questions from the committee? Or a motion?
I'm wondering if I could just give a little context.
Sure, as member, as member of the DEI Committee.
Hi, Joe and Anjali, it's, it's Wendy. Um, just to give a little, hi. Just to give a little context, um, we had had a student on the committee a while back, and it kind of went out of our, our thoughts as we were working on a lot of things. But as we were working on the Juneteenth event this past June, and speaking with, uh, the ghostwriter students, and it, it ends up being a, an excellent collaboration for us to understand the updated learnings that they're receiving in school about items such as slavery in the United States. And then for us to be able to provide the, a broader context of, of what those issues might mean, um, as adults living in the world. And another example was Indigenous Peoples' Day, where we had, um, interaction with a, a student ghostwriter in the same way. And after that, those two collaborations, it just kind of came back to us that there is a huge benefit in having the youth, um, be able to weigh in and, and help us see a wider breadth of what the community has to offer. And part of our vision and mission statement is an emphasis on all students of all generation, I mean,
Residents of all.
Residents of all generations, and this helps us, um, fulfill that commitment as well.
So it's a youth seat as opposed to like a Westford Academy? I know Anjali said it, yeah.
Exactly. Yep.
It would be a, a junior or a senior?
Yeah.
My question would just be, is, you know, understanding the Citizen Action Form, is it safe to assume that if you're under eighteen, you're not able to sit on a committee? So this would, this is why you would want this specific seat that would allow a junior or a senior? Because like for Wendy's point, if you've had some, if you've had a, a student in the past, perhaps that person was already of a certain age, and so we're trying to expand that, that option? Is that, is that what's going on, or is there not a limit as, on the Citizen Action Form in terms of ages? Did I ask that correctly?
That's a good question, Superintendent Chu. I, I don't know if you're directing it to us or to your colleagues. Um, I'm not sure. We, we weren't really aware of the age of the, the first student who joined us. Um, and there may be, uh, something related to that, um, forms. After talking with a few people, it seemed that, uh, the relative experience and, and maturity, juniors and seniors would be quite ready, uh, to, to join us. And I think the students that you talked to tonight, the students who present to you, sort of bear that out. You know, they, they bring, I think, uh, important, uh, perspective. One of the students who you honored, um, tonight, or they both spoke about, um, a sense of belonging and inclusion, and also a sense of being part of a family. The CPAC presentation is all about, uh, inclusion. Uh, and so, just to get back to your, your specific question, it wasn't so much about age to us, and there may be an age requirement, uh, I haven't seen it. But it was more about, uh, sort of, um, coming to consensus on juniors and seniors would be appropriate for a number of reasons.
And I also wanted to add, Joe, to that, probably Dr. Chu, if you're asking what's historically what we have had. When we started this committee in twenty twenty, we had, I think, a member from WA who was a member in our committee. Then they had left. We received somebody else. And then we accepted them. Now they are already gone from the Westford School System and Joint College. And then last year, somehow the nature of positions changed, because we had that void anyway. We were not using that position for a year. Last year, we did not ask for a position for a student. And hence, right now, we are full as far as members are concerned. And we are looking to have a separate, um, one seat available, which will be open, and on a rotation basis, we will continue to accept members as long as they are here. They, they can be accepted, and once they move on, then we probably will look for, uh, filling that position by another student and not by another adult of the community.
Yeah, so it's the idea of guaranteeing that one of the spots would be a junior or senior as opposed to allowing for that, right? Because there's nothing that's prohibiting that as it is right now. So I was just trying to understand, are we trying to expand something that would be prohibited otherwise? But you're trying to guarantee that there's a student voice, um, at the table, which sounds great.
Establishing, essentially establishing a student seat on the committee.
Yeah, so, um, as the person who built that form many years ago, there is no age filter on it. Uh, but yeah, that's the way I understand it, is, you know, it's like School Committee having a seat at, uh, you know, it's reserved. Uh, my only other comment, uh, would be, you know, I'm totally in favor of this. I would actually, um, ask you to consider whether or not two students would be better, because, uh, one student in a room full of adults can be very intimidating. Um, and, you know, there, there is a certain, uh, thing about having, uh, someone next to you to, to support you. So, um, I'm certainly, uh, in favor of this as a first step. But yeah, I would, I would certainly encourage you to consider asking for another also.
I also think it's a, oh, sorry. I also think it's a great idea. My, I was wondering about your perspective in terms of, uh, inviting students from other communities, did you say? Other than Westford? I'm just wondering.
I think, I think what he meant was that, he just said that, well, he, he did mention that, but he also, I think what they're saying is they said that, I think, they need to be a resident of Westford.
Oh, I see.
But it is possible that a resident of Westford could be in a school in another community.
Yes.
So that's kind of why they're not limiting it to that. That's the way I hear.
Okay, yeah. No, I understand, because I thought everyone would be a resident of Westford. Okay. Thank you.
Any other thoughts? Any final thoughts, Joe or Anjali?
I think we have wrapped it up, pretty much covered, uh, all the concerns and questions you had. So yes, Laurie, uh, Dr. Chu already answered your question. Uh, the person has to be Westford resident, but could be a student in Westford or in the nearby towns or in a technical school. Or person could be homeschooled as well. So options, any, any of those options, they, they would still qualify.
Right, yes, that makes sense. Thank you.
It sounds like you are in touch with someone in mind. But if you need help filling another seat and want to collaborate on, with the administration or with the committee on sort of reaching out to WA, or, um, we have contacts on the Neshoba Tech School Committee as well. So if we can help in any way to get the word out, whenever you have an opening, let us know. And if you come, want to reflect a bit and come back with another seat, um, seeing how that, that goes, let us know. Okay?
Appreciate your help. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you.
We'll take a motion to approve a student's seat to the Westford Town DEI Committee.
So moved? Second?
Tom?
Aye.
Laurie?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
Mari?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Great. Thank you, Joe and Anjali. We appreciate you being here. And Wendy?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, Matty. We're gonna move on to the Non-General Fund Guidebook. Um, and I noticed that we have lapsed from marking down our goals on the agenda.
Oh.
I know. This is like such a perfect one for a goal. So as you may remember, um, one of our, our second School Committee goal was to, was centered around this document that we've been working on since last spring.
Literally is a goal.
Yeah, that's. And, um, the Finance Committee Subcommittee has been diligently working on this. I went back and looked. I think we've met six times in the last three months, which is a busy fall for us. Um, and obviously could not do this without the support of Administration and the Business Office and, um, Director of Finance Jenny Lynn. So very appreciative for everyone's help, um, to get this ready for, on this timeline. We really wanted to make sure that something was, um, sort of ready to be published along with the budget presentation, which is December ninth. So you've seen some of this, most of this, uh, well, sorry, some of this as a sort of a template or a draft in a previous meeting. Um, and then it was also shared as, as an example at the Tri-Board Meeting in November. There's been some cosmetic changes, but, uh, the meat of it is, is here for us to discuss tonight. You'll see nineteen separate accounts included. And, uh, each one of them has what the Finance Subcommittee has discussed preliminarily as, um, like an appropriate usage and what a, um, sorry, expected usage and appropriate balance. So those are really the two pieces that we would love to hear any reaction from the full committee as those inputs could, um, influence the FY26 budget creation if there was, um, feedback changed from, everything is up for discussion, so please let us know if you, um, want to. The Finance Subcommittee did a recommendation, but it's up to the full committee. Is that, am I saying that right? So this cover page, um, really tries to orient the user, trying to imagine someone from the public, not just FinCom, although we know that, um, we have tried to create a lot of this with them in mind. But also, anyone from the public to pick up this document as a supplemental resource for the budget. So this cover page just has a lot to, of sort of definitions to help. But we can move on to the summary page, which will be Page Two, which, uh, thanks to Tom, populates from all of the cells in the other tabs, pulls forward to create a summary page so that you don't have to update separately. So there's not a lot of meat on this summary page tonight, because a lot of these are placeholders for the FY26 offsets that will be shared once.
At our next meeting.
Yeah. And once Administration has finalized the FY26 budget. So the first, um, account for tonight is the food service. This was shared with everybody, so that, for someone in the public, we're not gonna read through, um, each, each of these sections tonight. But there's a purpose to try to help explain, um, the function of each account, what kind of fees are used to generate the revenues, what are some current, uh, expense example, examples of expenses, any related laws or policies. And then what really prompted our discussions in Finance Subcommittee are those bottom four lines, which are the expected routine usage. So for food service, that this is really a self-funded, sort of standalone account, where the revenue should cover expenses. And, um, in the last year, we have increased the offsets for food service, employee wages, and benefits, as well as a portion of head custodian, um, wages. So this was one of the easiest ones, because the appropriate end-of-year balance is actually mandated by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Um, they would, they recommend a balance of three months, um, of operating expenses.
Yeah, we'll say it's recommended. It's not made, because some people don't do, I think we do it well. Some districts don't. It is a recommendation.
Thank you for clarifying, because I said mandated and then it's a recommendation, so.
Can I just say one quick thing?
Please.
One of the things that I think might be helpful to remember and, and to think about is that as this guidebook is being created. as this guidebook is being created, this is an additional piece of information. We're not looking for this to replace the other pieces of information that we've provided in the past, right? So for example, I know um, you know, something that was mentioned earlier was like all, all the, all the documentation and all of the different uh Excel sheets that exist that we share with the committee, that we share with the FinCom, those will still be shared.
Right.
Um we'll still have all of that data that will be shared. This is sort of bringing it all together and we're trying to make it more accessible for people to understand what those different things mean. But we're not, um where you, where you might only see FY twenty-one to FY twenty-five in this piece um on this page here as we're trying to make room for things, we're actually still planning to share the extensive amount of information that we've shared in the past.
Yep, thank you.
Make one other point before we get into this too far.
Sure.
In many cases, you'll observe a um appropriate end-of-year balance that we've come to this, this group with a recommendation. And the current balance is far exceeding that number. Uh the thought is that this will guide administration in developing the plan. It's not, we're not saying that by next year we need to be back to that number. It's, we wanna see some, some plan to, to work to that number, so. Actually, in one case, it's, there'll be a plan to work up to that number, so.
That's a good point, that's one of the things we'll be talking about even just with our budget presentation. When we actually present the numbers to you, it will be with a justification as, okay, we think it would take us X number of years to hit a specific target because in most cases, not in all of them, but in most cases, if we just went to the target right away, we'd find ourselves in a problem the following year.
Correct.
Right, a fiscal cliff.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question while we're on the food service? And I know it pops up a few times through some of the slides where we have the, in the blue, the appropriate end-of-year balance. And I, I'd like how you explain, you know, generally a three-month, say for food service specifically of operating expenses. Is there any intention to kind of give a rough number in that line? Because for someone who doesn't, and it, because I mean, we had other places where it's a year's worth of salary. Well, what does that look like in terms of a, a rough number, not a definitive, because I know it can kind of.
Well, our struggle with that was um you, you, you'd have to update it a lot because the expenses will grow each year. And we were trying to limit the places where, where like, where it's a living document versus a sta- a, a, a standing document, right, resource.
And later though, you'll see an example where we, we quantify it in the proposed change, right? So instead of changing it in the appropriate end-of-year balance because we know that it might be a number that might change a little bit every single year, we then are, we're, we're then putting that number in the proposed change. So we're saying this year's salary is approximately twelve thousand dollars, right? But we're not putting it in the appropriate end-of-year balance because, like, that might not be the good example. But to the point being, it, it exists someplace.
I was gonna add to that, um alongside of this is the intention for a written policy. And that blue line is really what would live in the policy. So there is that delicacy to, to put a number there, but then you have to update it. So we're trying to thread that.
Well, I'm just thinking, because I know you were saying this is also for someone who maybe, you know, just wants to inform themselves more. I have no, you know, if I'm a parent who doesn't typically follow the budget or whatever, you, you would have no idea what does three months of roughly look like, so.
Yeah.
It's, it's kind of really to figure out a way for that person to kind of get an idea because then you can maybe access that um, the, the document a bit more kind of with this understanding of looking through the balances and.
And I think it does kind of go back to that whole question about policy, right, which you know very well, right? Is that we don't want it to be something that has to go through a three-week or three-meeting cycle every single year to adjust.
Yeah.
And with the finances, many of them will change by a certain percentage every single year based on the nature of finances. So it's a question of if we can articulate what the intent is and then we can, we can quantify it someplace else, but it's not necessarily in the space
Exactly, yeah.
where the policy would need to be adjusted.
Yeah, no, I, I, I do get that. The one other question that I had was, you were, just when we look at specifically food services, is this as a whole or does each school have their own account? Um so that, that's kind of three-month balance, is it a district-wide or is it per each school? Because if, if you understand what I'm saying, sorry.
If the numbers weren't in this order, starting with food service is a bad idea.
The rest of us, so it's easier.
But your questions are great, but the, but food service is the most complicated because each one of the schools, we have to follow their own account, but, and Jenny can explain it best. The overall food service lives in the, in the bottom line.
Yeah.
And so we're tracking it all because we wanna know exactly what, what's happening in every single school. But you only see the bottom line for the district-wide at, in, in one spot. Whereas almost all of the other accounts, it's just a single, it's a single line, so it's easier to follow.
And my guess is in, when we report this, it's really just that bottom line.
Yep.
Yes, because on the federal state grants, we inverse them in the subsidiary ledger in accounting term. They must be exactly tied to their towns like one summary report. So if we do the allocation for individual school, uh that will cause some, you know, discrepancy or, you know, variance for their audit purpose, which will result like audit finding. So that's why we cannot allocate the system-wide, the fund balance into individual school. So we try to avoid audit finding there. Uh so that's why it's not a good idea to start everything by the school choice, uh by the food service. But uh, you know, on the system-wide, any balance will stay in the bottom line. Even you see a, you know, a debt balance for the end of year for individual school.
Do you feel the need to put in the individual schools then?
Okay.
So I was just actually, you know, we spent however many weeks looking at this and whether or not this document needs to have the detail to each school.
That's a good point. We, Jenny, Jenny put the individual school information in there because it is very important that we track the individual school information. But you're right, for the purposes of this document, that might be more confusing whereas every other um account is just the one-line item. That might be something we go back and say that we don't in this document. Would that, would that impact you if it was only pulling the district-wide information? And, and you just kept the, the individual school information separate for the accounting purposes?
The only thing is we cannot combine the system-wide with the individual school. That's why we still have individual school listed, listed out here.
But you even flip us, can you like, is it possible to say put the, that bottom line like really up at the top and then kind of say, this is the breakdown if you want, but you're kind of, that initial, you're just looking, the top line is really the, the main number.
But that means that here when we have the quarterly report, we just need to do some minor added for this format. But which is fine because that will cause less confusion. For this whole spreadsheet, we can put a system-wide on the top of the whole spreadsheet, but still list out the individual school so you can see what's the combined revenue expenditure and also fund.
But I, so the system-wide is obviously different, but I, I'm looking at just the very bottom line, the, the fund balance.
Yeah, the district, yeah.
That's the one that I think just needs to be on this.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, line thirty-nine and forty-one should be on.
Or just.
If anything, the entire thing could be inverted.
Yeah.
Just flip the whole thing.
Yeah.
So that, that would be just the one thing as I'm looking at tonight.
Yeah, sure, and, and it's, this is all great discussion because what I wanted to say and forgot was this is not, doesn't have to be final, like we're, we're kind of, we've talked about this as like a pilot this year through the budget process to say, how does this work? You know, we, we, we have heard from maybe these columns would be different or, or what, what number of years to show below or what level of data. So we're, I, I, the finance committee is hoping to take all of that in and sort of reflect and um come out in January or February with sort of that draft written policy and we'll have had a couple of weeks of this in the wild to react to, so, so this is great. Um and so what you'll see on the next, several of the next couple is that proposed changes is sort of like a template language. And there's placeholders at the moment for most of them. And then when um Dr. Chu gives his presentation on December ninth, this um as an attachment or, or a resource will also be updated with FY twenty-six offset information.
For example, like the, the next tab, the bill, the school building usage, we put.
Yeah, why don't we move on?
I was going to say you.
We put some actual numbers in there.
Yeah.
We're like, okay, this is, we're just kind of, we're still working through them. So we just kind of shared some actual numbers with you right now, this will be part of the presentation.
So, yep, so the next one is school building usage, which is our facility rentals. This is dictated by a policy that we have, so that's all in the, above in the top. It can be used for facility needs, custodial employee wages and our facility coordinator. The finance subcommittee talked about an appropriate end-of-year balance was to maintain that year's worth of coordinator wages as, as like a carryforward. Um and then it, we included information about what the last year's offset was so that you will be able to compare whether there, you know, a change in stuff, a change in the upcoming year. As you can see, this one does have the amounts in it and not a placeholder. And then also where the offset was in a year prior so that you can see sort of what that trend has been. So this one has grown from ten thousand to thirty thousand and the proposal would be for FY twenty-six to use fifty thousand. And that's to Tom's point earlier is that if you're looking at this saying, well, you, your appropriate end-of-year balance is only a year's worth of coordinator wages, you're above that. So how do you rectify that, but you can't do it in one year responsibly? Um because then that just creates a hole of funding for the future year.
Because according to this, you're using it to potentially offset custodian wages and overtime. And, you know, there's no guarantee for these kind of funds. I mean, this is, the funds we generate is purely on rentals.
Yep, usage.
So if, if we have a year where we don't have the same quantity of rental usage, if we're relying too much on this for paying our custodians because it's not necessarily just paying the custodians during the time of the rental, is that, would this offset, like, their, their salaries for?
So it's supposed to be what the facility rental required for extra above and beyond
Oh.
of that person's job that day.
Yeah.
And, but their, the bulk of their salary comes from the operating budget.
Yeah, so we wouldn't be relying on this to offset, okay.
Right, it wouldn't, wouldn't be using.
If there's low usage, then there would be low expenses.
It wouldn't be used to offset snow removal overtime, you know, as an example.
So unless there are hands, I'll just keep going, but um those are the parts that are up for discussion or reaction or questions. So next is the integrated preschool. Again, for something like this, we do have the amount for the fee in there so that families, um someone reading this does know how this revenue is generated. And we have the expected routine usage for this is to use incoming revenue as offsets for operational expenses. The appropriate end-of-year balance here is a year's worth of salary expenses. The FY twenty-five offset was two hundred and fifty thousand and that was up sixty thousand from FY twenty-four. And then we have a placeholder for FY twenty-six.
And being cautious not to be responding to public comment, I'd like to highlight the fact that we had discussion about the fees associated with many of these. And uh basically, I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but this, my understanding is that we will be really doing the full analysis on fees. We're not looking to increase any fees this year because we're in this trying to get these funds back to what this committee determines to be appropriate, so.
Right, we actually, and we started looking at the fees ju- yeah, ju- before you joined us, right? So we've been looking at the fees. This one is interesting because the fee itself, we need to compare it to other public school preschools. So the data's a little bit different, but we, we are doing an analysis of the fees to figure out, are they in line with what the comps are anyway? Do we, is it, is it supporting the program as it's intended? That would be sort of a, right, that would, that would be a reason to consider whether it should be changed. If it's, uh, if, if it's actually, if it's, if it's not necessary, that would be a level to, you know, to, to see if it was, needed to be adjusted. But this one specifically is one that we're like, okay, we're collecting the data to look at how we are in line with other public schools that are providing that same.
I just wanted to get out that, that we are in actively looking at these fees and it's gonna take some time, but.
Right, and, and nineteen of them does take time. We, like I said, I think two years ago, we did, I don't know, parking, early arrival and preschool. Yeah, so it's, it's on some sort of, we're hoping to hit some sort of cadence with it.
Yep.
And I just wanted to say, it's, it's not that we can't bring something from public comment into our discussion. I think that is the point, so if you heard something that you wanna bring up. I thought I had something else on preschool, well, just keep going. Early arrival program, so this is at our elementary schools for before-school care. And this is a great example of when we did the, do the fee review, we learned a lot. Like what is the staffing ratio for this program? What are the participation levels by school? So we did as a subcommittee review all of that and I think it was probably last spring now. I'm not sure that publishing that some, in this document or something related to this document makes sense, but the finance subcommittee does have a goal to be um looking at that, so.
Can you use this against utilities as well? We have the early arrival program, we've got, we're using, obviously.
You could.
I think we had that discussion on facility usage as well and um I, I think we were talking that it, it's certainly in the realm of reasonable.
Yeah.
But it's also, you know, what is the, the math, like, just a factor to make sure that it is, again, appropriate, that, you know, we don't end up with an offset that now the pro- program goes away and we save a small amount on utilities, but we're trying to offset a huge amount.
You, you could calculate a percentage, however, it wouldn't be enough to support the percentage that, that you would figure, so that's where it'd be, yeah.
So for this one, it's similar to the previous one with maintaining a year's worth of salary expenses. And I, I wanted to be clear on this and had, um, again, while this is like a living document, how do we capture here that there are expenses coming out of this that aren't just the twenty-five-hundred offset, right? So if some, if you read this, it looks like, it's not clear how much the staff wages come out in addition to the offset to the elementary administrative assistance. So it looks like that's your only offset, but um most of this usage is paying the paraprofessionals directly who are staffing this. And then there's additional offset to the general fund. Depending on how you look at this, you might be more interested in what's coming in and what's going out, no matter where it goes. Or you're looking at this to say, how much are we offsetting our general fund with it? So those are all discussions we can continue having and we can keep reflecting on in the finance subcommittee. Any questions on these?
Your projected balance is obviously based on kind of numbers you have so far this year and what you anticipate.
Right, so every, um, every winter as part of the budget process, the projected expenses and revenue for each of these are um projected, I just said that, with an end-of-year projected balance. And so we, Jenny and I were just talking about, how do you, do you take, like, so thi- this number was probably gen- this number was probably generated last January during the FY25 budget process.
Yeah.
And Jenny looked at what's the expected expenses and revenue and said, this is what it makes, this is what probably makes sense for a balance next, next year, right? But then some of them could change based on end of year actuals. So we, but we're trying to limit the amount of times that this gets updated, right? So even if you got end of year actuals in September, we're trying to bridge that to when the budget would be an update for the whole document.
Yeah, no, no, completely.
So we, we've talked about, and this would be, I think this is something we would try to capture in the written policy, which is if the actual and the project, if the actuals closed out, that would trigger a change in the projected balance by more than X number of dollars, like a hundred thousand dollars, like if there's a big swing, then we would probably have to change that projected balance.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
Am I missing any hands? Okay. Extracurricular fees is the next one, and we renamed this. I'm actually really proud of that. This was called activity fees. But as you remember, policy subcommittee, there is a student activity accounts.
Yes.
And these activity fees kept getting sort of confused there. So we just went ahead and renamed these as extracurricular fees. The power went to our heads. And so these are revenue from students who in middle school and in high school are taking advantage of after-school activities, extracurriculars.
These are my favorites because it says, this is not the student activity accounts.
Maybe I could take the caps off, but.
No, it's good. I think that's important. I would leave them.
Yeah, so, and this goes right out to staff stipends. There are stipends that are part of our operating budget and the general fund as well. So these are, this is a partial offset. So you can see the amounts there. We thought it made sense to carry forward six months' worth of stipends to make sure that you could fund and offer programming to students because stipends get paid out twice a year.
Oh, yeah.
So to start the fall knowing that you have an amount in the account that could pay for like the start of year activities.
Because the activity fees come in, in the fall, right? So we want to make sure.
And throughout the year, but yeah.
Oh, yes, but, but the bulk will come potentially as the activities are starting and.
This one was, is also of interest because as you may remember, there was a new MOA for our stipend amounts that was approved just recently. So we really want to keep an eye on how that, those amounts may change the usage of these accounts and not make any too big of a change until we know more. Elementary music fees, this is for music instrumental and band instrument, sorry, strings and band instrumental music instruction that happens during the school day for grades three to five. That fee per student per year is $290. It goes directly to those staff wages. And I like using this as my, as the cleanest example I can think of for why we would have a carry forward balance. If for some reason September came around and the participation dropped drastically, I still, I think that's a value of something that we've been offering our community and we wouldn't want to react and cancel it because we couldn't fund it. So if we're saying that this is an important part of the student experience, that we want to offer this opportunity, having that carry forward balance lets us offer it even in a low participation year without sort of reacting and saying, oh, my gosh, we can't fund this. It lets us, you know, try to collect, collect that data for a year.
Yeah, it gives the time to, to see if this is a trend or not.
Right, right, so I feel like that's, that's the cleanest example to, to visualize. Fifth grade camp is a couple of days at the, in June or May that all the fifth graders from the three elementary schools spend together doing field day type stations at East Boston Camps and typically includes an enrichment presentation from an outside vendor. The participation fee per student funds the coordinator stipend as well as any supplies, the contracted vendor, and bus transportation. So we thought that was important to say that we could at least fund and search for and fill that coordinator position with the balance in there. Elementary library book sales, this is basically the, just so that each school can track which profits they get to from their student family book sales. These are the scholastic book fairs and everything that come in. It's not that.
What happens with their balance then?
So right now, we're just sort of saying that from our point of view, it doesn't make sense to carry, to maintain a balance. So we wouldn't just, again, like that's our.
We should be using it.
Yeah.
That's our take, and then we share that with administration and administration can encourage usage.
Yeah.
Okay, so, but, but, and this is a good example, too, that behind this one-line item is a school-level breakdown.
Yeah.
That Jenny has. So this isn't, each school knows their balance.
And this isn't to say that on June 30th, if there's money in that account, that it has to be closed out somewhere. It's just our, it would be our recommendation that get, get to using it, you know?
Be able to say, what's the plan?
Right.
So the idea is longer term, this would disappear essentially from this book if we're not?
No, because it, they keep having the book fairs. It's for like accounting and tracking it. But I think, I think mainly we, the expectation would be that it doesn't grow.
Yeah.
Right, that if there's some nominal amount from year to year, as they wait and see what kind of books do these, is this new cohort interested in? Let's buy some more of those, you know? But if you have a book sale and you're using those profits.
Yeah, I'm just wondering how, do we just state that this doesn't, like, we don't offset with these funds or something? Again, I'm thinking if somebody is looking at this going, oh, hang on, is this money? Because, you know, some of these we can offset the operating balance with, but this we wouldn't be. This is for each individual school. So is there a way to maybe just put that line in our note? That's.
I think that's a little bit in the expected routine usage.
Yeah.
You know, the fact, like, in this particular Homewood Stadium, it's used to purchase books. But I believe it's for the library, like to.
Yeah, in, in theory, it could still be used to offset.
Right.
Books, right? The purchase of, so I mean, like, if, if all of a sudden there was a balance in and then they didn't necessarily have a plan for it, we could say, okay, we're going to use X amount to purchase these, these things that have been requested. And, but again, we know that it's, the purposes for replacing these books, but in all reality, each, each school might struggle with, they might not necessarily need that number of books at that many a time, but maybe the other school does. And so they might, it's something that we could look at.
The next one, Guidance College triggered some good discussions. Currently, $8 per student covers transcript requests. And we did not make any recommendations on this because administration would like more time to look and more further into this.
Okay.
That's a really good question as to how many transcripts need to be mailed. Some do, but we're curious as to how many.
There are some colleges that do not accept them through our score. And so they do have to be mailed. And the tricky part that I just learned this past week is the amount of time that transcripts need to be mailed out. So it's not just a one-off.
Oh, sure.
You know, in your senior year, but it might be multiple times in the senior year, depending on when the student is applying and then.
Updating.
Updating it. And then all of the alumni transcripts continue to come through for years to come where we do have to provide transcripts. So it's a little bit of a, it's kind of a little bit of a bigger beast than we thought.
Mari has her hand up there. Yep, Mari.
I would like us to look at this more closely because it does add up quickly along with other costs and it doesn't make a lot of sense in the digital age.
I, I, we hear you, and I think we're just not ready to make that final recommendation tonight. That's why it says TBD, but this finance subcommittee has been having that, touching on that conversation.
And I'll even say that I, I raised the fact that $8 is a very random number these days, you know? $5, $10, those are a lot more.
It used to be six, which was another random number.
Right, so, yeah, just thinking in the cash, cashless age, you know, so.
I think as part of, like, when we make our sort of plan for where to focus our energies for the spring, the finance subcommittee will definitely be circling back to anything that triggered good discussions and questions.
But apparently you're not just using it for mailing transcripts. It's for busing eighth grade visits, financial eight-night stipend, staff college visits. So it is a bit more than just mailing transcripts.
Yep, we're going to TBD.
Have fun with that.
Next one is school lost books. Students who lose or damage a school book issued to them must reimburse the school. Again, the, the finance subcommittee felt that no carry forward balance really makes sense here, so administration will react.
Did we skip one?
I don't think so.
School lost books?
Skip tech fee, or am I looking?
No, tech fee is next.
Next one.
Tech, tech fee is after.
Um.
Okay. Fascinating.
Huh.
Right?
Did you just drag that over?
No, I didn't move it.
When I, hmm, interesting.
Can I move it? Can I do that?
Yeah, you're.
Oh, I was about to say, are you in the?
I didn't know I could move a tablet.
You're an editor. You're going to lose privileges. Yeah, so.
That's the only thing. You can look at the history.
So lost books, um, sorry, yeah. Lost books is pretty straightforward and again, we, you know, as I'm sure you might have this reaction, we were like concerned about a growing balance here. And so that communication is on the administration's side and our recommendation is above. Tech fee, Chromebook repair. Similarly, you know, it triggered when a student issued, when, when a Chromebook needs repair. This gets a little bit more complicated with the insurance. There are some payments that come in from the insurance and then, I'm sorry, I'm just reading that part. And so, or a family's payment from an uninsured repair. But again, looking at this, if there's a repair and an expense associated with it, our expectation is that, that those funds are used.
Because I'm, I'm reading that right, the end of year balance for FY24 was nearly $7,000. But it looks like that's projected to be massively used, okay.
School athletic revolving is a bit of a larger one. The high school and middle school athletic fees are the revenue here as well as gate receipts. It's used for stipends and a bunch of other related expenses to this programming. We felt that two athletic seasons because of the way the, you know, fall and winter and spring seasons fall land, that, that made sense to be able to offer, start a school year by offering those, that programming. Anything to add here or react? Bus transportation is the next one, if not. This one should be pretty straightforward. We've talked about this before because it is a large dollar amount that I think got a couple asked questions about last budget cycle, but our recommendation is to include, is to maintain that balance.
Yeah.
Of one year. And then use it the following year. Miscellaneous, oh, park, sorry, parking fees. At Westford Academy, $200, $200 per student is the revenue. This is used mostly for crossing guards, can also be supplies and facility maintenance. We thought that six months of the crossing guard expenses was the most critical piece of this to maintain.
It's on high balance.
Any questions?
And this is a good example where we put what that approximate amount was, kind of to your point earlier, Catherine. Like if there's a way to add that in there, I just, I'm always trying to be protective of the additional amount of work that Jenny needs to do.
A hundred percent agree, yeah.
So I go back to, if there's ways to pull it in.
Yeah.
And only change it in one spot, then that makes sense because we're really looking at what can be a, what can be a document that can, we can, we can use for a long time.
Right.
And so that's still the, this is just a good example where that makes sense right there. And maybe we can look at some of those others and if there is a way to pull in an average over what is a three-month, you know, cost of something, there might be a way to do that, that, that it's able to, to also still be a living piece.
Or even what I'm thinking more is to sort of incorporate it into that recent changes line.
Yeah.
Because I, I do like that those, the two, the expected routine usage and the appropriate end of year balance, to me, should sort of be untouched unless there was like a change in usage by the school committee.
Right.
The bottom two have an expectation would be discussed by the finance subcommittee each fall and updated as part of the budget process. So recent changes and proposed changes, to me, could be a better spot to use numbers.
Well, and, and we're using that language before reaching target balance. And so I feel like that is where it should be, right? Before reaching target balance, which is approximately.
Yep, yep.
X.
Okay.
Does that make sense, Jenny?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was, I was just going to say, in presenting the budget, you'll be justifying the offset.
Right.
You know, you'll say, you'll be saying, this is the, I can imagine you would be able to say, this is what we've, what our target is and, you know, this is our math to get there in four, five, six years, whatever.
Yeah, and if it lives in the proposed changes, granted, if it lived in the appropriate end of year balance, both of those, you have pulling for the summary.
Yep.
Yes.
Good point.
But you're right, if it lives in the proposed change, I feel like where we say the word target balance, if we then put in parentheses what that is, then that's something that we could adjust because some of them, it might be an average of three years. It might be these three months and, and we can make sure that we can share with the community, this is what our target is.
Yep.
Thank you. Can I ask as well, can we use that fund to offset like custodian salaries if we're doing like snow removal, like snow plowing and stuff?
Are we at parking again? I changed, so that's where we are right, yeah.
I think it's listed in there.
You know, how that.
That is true. That is true.
Out of hours and.
Yeah.
That's true. We had, we had a really good conversation about this because honestly, Tom had mentioned up a couple of things that I wasn't understanding and he, he explained it in our last, in our last subcommittee meeting, which helped me understand. And the point being is that, yeah, if we're really isolating it to kind of these needs so that, well, you can explain it.
So really, came from last year, there was an offset for HVAC identified from this account in the budget proposal. And I questioned it at that time and I raised it again this year as the example in saying that there's, I think it's 300 spaces that we can permit. And I said, well, if we're using it to offset HVAC, that means we're charging, we're, we're having 300 families pay that repair as opposed to if it's something associated with the parking, whether it's seal coating, whether it's, you know, the crossing guards, the plowing. So snow removal of the sidewalks and whatnot. Again, that's a little bit more loosely connected, so, so I think identifying it that way.
We're still plowing the actual parking lot.
Right.
Yeah. Your, I mean, your question about whether it can even go towards custodial salaries at WA that are helping to clear around that school, it absolutely could.
Yeah.
My, my point was, and I kind of pushed back on Tom because I was saying, well, okay, here we are trying to appropriately use some of these funds.
Right.
And you're putting limits on what we can use it for. But his point was, he would, didn't want. and you're putting limits on what we can use it for, but his point was, he would, didn't wanna see us in the future
Yeah.
raise a fee
Yeah.
to then arbitrarily pay for something else, and I was like, oh, I totally get that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so then we kinda went back and said, okay, well then let's kind of look at it, that's why we say related maintenance needs.
Yeah.
As opposed to just generic facility needs.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, anything else? Next up is mis- two miscellaneous sort of accounts, school donations, and the next one is scholarships. Um, they're both similar in my mind anyway, as to sticking around for when needed, um, and then just communicating with administration that no carryforward balance is expected, aside from, like you said, obviously if a donation or something comes in at the end of one fiscal year, there's obviously a reasonableness to that usage. Um, but we did raise some concerns about a, a main, maintenance balance and a, a
Yeah.
just hanging around, so, we're gonna...
Like, do people make donations with no purpose?
Um, sometimes.
They do?
Yeah, yes, yeah, all the time.
Those, those are actually the donations you want. Really?
Sometimes they have specific purposes.
Yeah.
The point I was gonna raise is that this is actually another really good example that this is what the food service could look like if that's what you prefer.
Yeah.
Because this is the exact same thing, is that every single school has their own donation account.
Oh, okay.
But what's being reflected is the aggregate, pulling them all together. And so, we don't actually have thirty-three thousand dollars sitting in, well, sitting in one account. It's actually somebody donated five hundred dollars to this school, and somebody donated two thousand dollars through this program to another thing, and so Jenny knows which schools those are attached to.
Yeah.
And so, that kinda takes us back to, if, if this is an easier way to look at it through food, for, and if we compare it to food service, we could do the same thing with food service. Or the other part is, if, if we want more information, we could actually have this broken down by schools.
So, this would be a good one then, that if, if there's an amount in each school, so we're saying no carryforward balance, then I would, I would personally wanna see the plan for, for carrying that, the plan and justification of carrying that forward. You know, if there's some greater thing that's coming in a couple of years, then I think just having that communication from the school level before administration saying, well, you know what, we need to fund XYZ, so we're just zeroing that, that account out, so.
Well, to, to that point,
So.
what you'll know is that like, as we've been looking at this, as a school comes to us and says, hey, we have this need for X, the first thing Jenny and I are looking at is, well,
You have money.
you have funds in your donation account that you could be using for this. And sometimes, I will say, cause again, they can be so random, and some of the schools are more accustomed to them than others, sometimes it's not something that they're immediately thinking of, so it's good that Jenny's able to go, well, you actually have eight hundred dollars in this account, that's what you should use first.
Okay.
I wonder, can you like asterisk this or something to kind of note that, when, this isn't necessarily a district account, like you said, it's not one account sitting with twenty-eight thousand.
Well, it does say miscellaneous, but.
True.
But you don't know, but it still feels like it's just a great, a- again, I, is that putting you on the hot seat, Jenny, and I apologize in advance? Similar to food service, if we had this broken down by schools, would that be an easy thing, or would that be extra?
It could be a little bit difficult because by the end of the year, we have some cash reconciliation issue, so we won't be able exactly to match the balance.
Okay.
But for full service, we can match the fund balance.
Gotcha.
But for the donation, it's based on cash, so, you know, in accounting, you need to do the bank reconciliation if they have any deposit in transit. So, our accounts payable.
Yeah.
So, that should be some reconciliation process if we have to update individual schools. So, that's the challenging part for this account to do that. Uh, but we do know the ballpark number for individual school.
Yeah.
Like, uh, around eight hundred dollars.
Yeah.
But we cannot provide, maybe we have to wait
Yeah.
to certain time point to give you exact balance for that account.
I'm not saying we'd need the exact, the, the individuals, I'm just wondering, like, is it worth noting?
I think we could add, add a note.
Wording, yeah.
Could add wording, that this is a, this is an accumulation of each school's
Yeah, right.
which, in theory, we could do the same thing under food service, knowing that each school, which, and again, it's kind of like, look at the appendix.
Yeah.
And they can, and so we could, the food service, we could go back to just doing the district-wide and letting people know in the description that
Yeah.
in the appendix, you can.
Not, not the district-wide, the, the total, because
Yeah.
Right, thank you, yeah.
Because the district-wide is its own.
Yeah.
The next one's pretty similar and negligible. You know, we kinda talked about, like, do, do we need this, or is this one, is this one of those paperwork things that you keep? Because there might be a random scholarship donation, and this is where it would go. So, all of these, I think these are all up for discussion as we keep
Okay.
keep evaluating them.
Do we know what SYID, oh, schoolwide.
Systemwide.
Systemwise.
Systemwide, I'll spell that out though, it's a good catch, thank you.
And like Swede with that.
Yeah, that's a good systemwide.
No, I've just been looking at it so long. School choice. So, um, here's one where we have, the committee has never had a, um, you know, a publicized guideline for usage or appropriate end-of-year balance. So, this is the one where I'm looking for some input or reaction from the committee. The finance subcommittee has talked about this, and our preliminary recommendation is to maintain a balance of one percent of the total operating budget. Here's another place where we put the number in the blue line, even though I said we weren't gonna do that.
Right.
But, uh, and you can see some, I think for this one too, what's really important is the recent changes, and that, like, tracking sort of what are the things that this account has been useful for. In the past two years, we funded new elementary ELA curriculum, so we had a great conversation in finance subcommittee about what future curriculum needs might there be, and how much advance notice do you have? And how, how else would you fund things like that? So, the, again, the finance subcommittee did have this, um, recommendation, but, and, and this is definitely one where if there is feedback from the wider committee, that could influence how the FY twenty-six budget is created. So, I'd like to open it up and pause here for a minute, yes, please.
A little, so additionally in that context, what we had talked about is that in the, in the last few years, we have been bringing in approximately five hundred thousand dollars of school choice. And we have increased the offset to at least five hundred thousand dollars, you can see we actually went above the five hundred thousand dollar, um, offset for FY twenty-five, because we were already trying to strategically spend it down. We've actually gone above that offset to use it for other things that are articulated here in the recent changes as well. But that's one of the reasons why we're looking at this one percent aspect, because to, to have that expected revenue, knowing that there might be a year where that could change, the state funding could change drastically, and even we could have, we could just have students leave as well too, we could, we could lose a significant amount of funding, so to have that amount of expected revenue available to us so that we have a year to prepare, plus that is the place where we've gone to and we can go to when we're looking at things like a curriculum investment, and we will have more of those in the future. So, those are kinda the examples. One of the things that, actually Jenny, I just saw, you, you documented this someplace else, so I thank you for doing that, and it reminded me that we didn't put it in here, is that another thing is the second year of the equity audit, right?
Yes.
So, seventy-five thousand dollars for the first year of the equity audit came in ARPA funding, but we knew that doing it in one year wasn't necessarily the best idea, and based on the proposals, we decided to do it as a two-year, and we're funding the second year through school choice as well too. So, those are good examples of funding that, that's available to us, so, so that's why the one percent seems to be a, a, a better target because it gives you that expected, expected, um, revenue and a little bit extra for the purposes of either planned things like curriculum or an emergency like a generator.
We also had a good conversation in finance subcommittee about, in the written policy part of this process, that maybe we speak a little bit about notification and discussion around large item purchases from here, from this, um, account. So, uh, we all, we should all be aware that we don't, the, the appropriation from this account does not require a vote every time. And it's sort of been alongside
That's correct.
Alongside, um, our STIP and the general goals, uh, district goals of, in a budget, that this has been used. Um, however, we had a good conversation, I thought, about can we strengthen that in the future with usage from here, that, um, that the committee would, would have a quick discussion about an upcoming purchase.
I mean, we, we, there are things that we already do, right? So, like, when we talk about capital purchases, there are things that we have to go through in terms of bringing it to the capital committee, other, other things like that. I think if there was a specific threshold that we wanted to look at, I will say, in my tenure, I've brought all of these major expenses to you and told you, this is what we're doing and this is how we plan to pay for it. You, as a committee, every time we've used it to balance our budget, you've voted on it, because that's been a part of, that, that aspect of it.
Yep.
But when we've used a few hundred dollars, or even, you know, recently we've used five thousand dollars to support a technology need, some of those I don't necessarily think would require a school committee vote. I'd be happy to share all of that information with you on a more regular basis. I do think it's important that we, we have always brought that information to you, cause when we've talked about things, I've, I've said, this is how we plan to pay for it.
Yep. Yeah, sorry, I didn't wanna imply that
Yeah.
it hadn't been happening, but it's just something we talked about, including in the written policy.
Which I think is a good idea.
Uh, the only reason I raise it is, it, it came up in conversation, and it did reach out to, um, one of the field directors at MASC, who um, is very much an expert on the finance side, um, and kind of had asked her this question. And, um, she had kinda said, um, that there was no minimum um, that an administration could simply proceed without committee allocation or approval. And so, that's what I'm kind of wondering.
I think that they're misunderstanding the question.
Well, we can share that with finance subcommittee and.
Just to kind of, no, and it's more just to clarify, cause I, I do think this is a question, and I've actually, I, this question came to me through some conversations with the parent, and that's why I had kinda reached out to clarify that, so, I think it would be helpful if we could.
Yep, why don't you share that with, um, the finance subcommittee?
I had sent it to you.
The, um, any other reactions to the appropriate end-of-year balance here? Okay, then I'll move us on to special education circuit breaker, which you all probably know that, um, we get a level of reimbursement for special education services. And our best practice that has been in the district for years is, um, receiving prior year's receipts and holding them to use in the next year. Did I describe that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. So, that's what you see documented here in the in the top half, and then the account history in the bottom.
It's pretty consistent to the history.
Yep. It's pretty straightforward, and then our favorite special education reserve fund is the last one, which, um, just as a reminder, can only be expended after a majority vote of both the school committee and the select board. This has been in existence since the March twenty-eighteen town meeting. And the wording from, um, that town meeting was creating a reserve fund to pay for unanticipated or unbudgeted costs for special education out of district tuition or transportation. The finance subcommittee talked about the wording that you see above, which is talking about a goal of reaching a target balance that can handle unexpected special education costs beyond the budget. For example, historical unexpected moving costs can range from seventy-five thousand to five hundred thousand. This range reflects costs that can vary from a teacher's salary to the placement of a residential student. And we settled on a target of one million dollars. We have not expended from this account, that, since it's, since its existence, we have continued to try to grow that with end-of-year closeouts. And you can see the balance history below.
But we, we haven't drawn on it then?
No, we haven't.
Right, right.
And the idea is we wouldn't be drawing on it until we?
Well, I mean, we've really only hit
Hit the d-
seven hundred thousand
Yeah.
in the last three months for, this, this past summer, so
I think the idea is
it hasn't felt like healthy enough to
To draw on it.
to be drawing on it.
I think the idea is that if through other savings realized throughout the course of the year, you can cover those expenses, that's where they're gonna come from first.
Okay.
But, we're legally obligated to provide services.
Yeah, yeah.
And we, we have this discussion that we don't know, we, you know, we can't ask a year in advance in January, you know, who's planning to move into Westford eighteen months from now, right? And if, if a family moves in with that, you know, worst-case scenario placement, right? We, we don't wanna be in the position of completely devastating the rest of the budget to fund that obligation, and this is
And then figure out time to prepare for it.
Right, yeah, right.
And Dr. Chu had a great example of
Yeah, a leave.
There, there was a recent leave of absence that's creating a need for, like, a, a time bounded, finite amount of contracted services for special education. It's not something that you would, they're not, um, replacing the
We weren't able to, yeah, we weren't, we weren't able to get like a long-term sub that would come from a different line item.
You're kinda subcontracting essentially.
It was like a, it was, yeah, literally having contracted services, which can be more expensive as well too. And so, if we were to look at our costs this year and then try to plan that for FY twenty-six, the idea is that if we have, if we have a healthy account here that we know that we could address a one-time fund, then I think we can be more proactive in how we plan for special education, but special education can be so variable
Oh, yeah.
in general, that this idea being like, okay, well, one of the conversations we've had is, well, no, we see that this expense that's taking place this year should really be a one-time event. We shouldn't roll that into our projection for next year, even though it's very much a, a, a real cost this year. And that's something that then we would be able to say, okay, we can go to the special ed reserve to then cover that cost and not, not have to increase our budget request for FY twenty-six, because we would be able to absorb that one-time situation.
When those one-time situations currently crop up, what are we funding them with? Or where do we typically?
It, it depends, I mean, some, sometimes it's, it's paying for something that then you're not able to spend. I mean, honestly, what's been happening in our district for historically is we've not addressed our facility needs. Across the board, we end up, we end up neglecting something else to pay a bill for, so, so we've not, you know, that's one of the things people have looked at, is that we haven't, we're still not proactively really funding our facilities in the same way that we probably should've been.
Yeah.
So, in a sense, we haven't been drawing from this account
No, we haven't.
at the expense of
Other.
potentially
Yeah.
facilities, as opposed to
That's a good example, yeah.
But we haven't typically used, like, the school choice?
We have sometimes, sometimes.
Sometimes, okay.
Um, I mean, right now, we're looking at, it's, right now, we're talking about something that has take place, it, it's taken place in FY twenty-five, so I don't have a specific example
Yeah.
as to how we're gonna pay for it, it's something Jenny and I'll be talking about as we look at.
But this seems, like, it, this would seem to be the only, at, at the moment, until this fund gets up and running
Right.
is the only kind of natural spot we have at the moment.
So, I would say that, that it's, it's up and running, there's funds there that we could be making that choice.
We could, we haven't drawn them down because we're trying to build them up specifically, and, but to your example, when we were having the conversation a year ago, and it were actually two years ago, about, um, the fourteen percent increase
Yeah.
that took place last year, this would have been an option to us had it been a, a stronger fund, it was- It wasn't, so we were saying we needed to use our, our special, our school choice funds to cover anything that we couldn't fit into the budget.
I mean, we have a target here of a billion, but even just hitting $700,000 has finally felt like.
Right.
Okay.
That's something the committee should be happy about.
Oh, yeah, no.
This is like, okay, we're finally at a place where we could have that conversation.
Right, right.
And it's, and it is something that will continue to, to oscillate, because as you use it, then you would continue to try to build it back up again. So, it's just.
So, are we at the point now where we can use it instead of having our facilities suffer?
I wouldn't yet. I mean, I think if our target is a million dollars, I think we're still working towards that.
Looks like it's more F Y twenty-six, F Y twenty-seven before we can.
So, the last page is just glossary and acronyms. If you see anything that, that you think should be added, please let me know. Again, the document is very much like a pilot draft, however you want to refer to it. We'll see it again December ninth with F Y twenty-six offset amounts populated. But it's, can have reflections, concerns, discussions throughout the whole next couple of weeks, months of budget process. And the finance subcommittee will commit to reflecting on that and having that written policy in, probably come to the committee in February. Okay. So, I didn't hear anything that, that was vastly different from finance subcommittee recommendations. But if something crosses your mind later, please reach out. And then we'll move on to policy updates.
Okay, let's try and move through, through this quickly. So, the first thing we have to do tonight is look at taking our vote on the three policies that have been currently up for review, and then we'll take their, that fourth policy for first reading. So, I think, do we need to waive the reading for?
Motion to waive the reading of P four two oh four, five two oh four, nondiscrimination and harassment policy. I need a second, please.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Mari?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, thank you.
Um, wave reading. So, this, as you can tell, we've had no public comment. It's the same policy that we, we put up three meetings ago. And it's based on Title IX changes. The advice from the legal department was to just do slight tweaking of the language to cover us with the, the changes in Title IX. And part of that, which we obviously move on to the next part, is removing P five three oh five and P four two oh three, the harassment policies, so that they don't contradict each other. There was a question that came that Courtney, you clarified with the incoming elect, president-elect, there was question marks over, there could be changes again to Title IX, and could this impact the, the policy, either the ones we're changing or the ones we're looking to remove? Courtney, thankful, which I must appreciate, had reached out to the, the lawyers just to clarify. And their recommendation was to proceed as planned, and that if there was going to be any changes down the line, it would still be a matter of time. And I suppose to also say, the two policies that we're looking to remove, they don't disappear. They still live in our, in our policy system. So, they're not active policies, but the language will remain there. So, if we ever have to come back and rejig or anything, they're there for us to pull on and kind of review and potentially reinstate. So, that's where we are.
Any discussion questions, or a motion to approve?
So, the one thing that stands out to me, and I apologize for not catching this sooner, is the cross-out of homelessness, religion, religion is listed somewhere else, but homelessness and immigration status. You know, I just, I do concern, some concerns about those being crossed out, but.
It's because they're, they're clarified in the top.
Okay.
The top sentence, they're already mentioned.
Okay, yes, all right, thank you. I, I knew I had seen the, the religion, I just, thank you.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve P four two oh four, five two oh four, nondiscrimination and harassment policy. And I need a second.
So moved.
Oh, second, sorry. Any final discussion? Tom?
Aye.
Mari?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Thank you for that work. We have to waive the reading on the next two?
Yeah.
Motion to waive the reading of P five three oh five, oh three, P five three oh three and four two oh three.
Motion to waive.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Tom?
Oh, aye.
Mari?
Sorry.
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay. You want to just remind us, oh, you already said that they're being removed for.
So, they don't contradict.
Any final questions on that? Is it a motion to remove?
It would be, yeah.
Yes.
Motion to remove P five three oh three and P four two oh three.
Second. No.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, Tom?
It's past nine o'clock, I know.
Tom? Sorry, all in favor?
Yeah, I struggle with this one. Aye.
Mari?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
And then the.
Motion to waive the reading of P five three two five.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Tom?
Aye.
Mari?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Do you want to briefly remind us what this one's about? What the updates are, I mean.
So, the update, originally, this came to us, again, was on the recommendation of just tweaking from the lawyers. So, it kind of encapsulated that Title IX language. And then, we also did actually get some, at the same time of that, we were looking at just making that, we got some additional feedback from the public, a public member, that maybe some of the language just needed a little bit of tweaking to make it more current with today's kind of thinking. And so, we've made, we discussed it, we had two full policy meetings on it. And these are the suggested changes. So, the idea would be, we would go up for public comment today, and that it would be voted on on December 16th at our school committee meeting. And then the policy subcommittee can have a little break, because we've done a lot of policies.
Can you get me that date that's up?
It is, I meant to check, one, do you have it there? One, two, three, sorry. Four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, Thursday, that 12th, that was it.
Right.
December 12th.
The policy talks about number of weeks, not necessarily number of meetings?
No, it's number of meetings.
It is, okay.
Yeah.
Because you're going to say, because our, because the ninth and 16th, we're, it's one week apart. So, I just want to make sure we weren't, okay.
Yeah, and I mean, it's up to, I think we have discretion on, that was kind of an added budget meeting.
Yeah.
So, if we want to hold business till January, that would be another option too, but.
If you don't have to, I think it's great.
Yeah.
Because you are having the meeting, so it is the appropriate time to talk about it. I just wanted to make sure we didn't miss and all of a sudden forget that that was only a week apart.
Our intention would be that public comment would close on the Thursday. We would do a review of any comment or feedback by then on the Friday, and it would be ready to go. It's not any, I mean, as you can see in the, the document, they're not dramatic changes. We're not really changing the spirit of the policy in any way, it's purely some language tweaking. So, we're not foreseeing.
Okay.
No, get it done and dusted, as we say, for 2024.
Are we offering feedback tonight, or do you want me to?
Yeah, sure.
I had a couple in student transitions on page one of five, I think. I just, I wonder about that first sentence that, you know, they may wish but not required to, like, the timing of transitioning. I just wonder if it's when we start to put in, but you're not required to do this. You know, it just sounds a little bit more, I think, guidance than we really need to have. It, it really should be they, they can transition at their time. Period, okay. So, that was one. There was change.
So, you're suggesting, sorry, Tom, that we just remove that altogether?
Yeah, the, the timing, you know, the timing is on the students, on their schedule.
Okay.
Then there was another spot about changing records and students 14 to 17. It's official records on page three. Students 14 to 17, student, either caregiver, parent, guardian caregiver, and student may alone or together make decisions about student record. I just, I wonder, and would suggest trying to clarify a preference. Like, if, if preference is given to the student, because I could see where the student could go in and say, I want my record to say X, and the parent say, no, 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 it needs to be Y. And now, all of a sudden, you're just every day going and switching, so.
I think this is one of those things where we really want to get the legal counsel to try.
And that is, this is an M G L.
Okay.
Yeah.
They're, they're, they're going to tell us.
Okay. So, it just, it, it just, I can see, reading it, it could, you, you could find yourself in that ping pong and being in the middle of the, the fight, which I don't think we want to be. And then just.
My, my understanding is though legally, is that the student can do that at that age, that the, the law.
Right, but it also says, in my reading, and I'm not a lawyer. I would defer to our lawyers here, but my reading is that the parent can also do it on their own as well, so. So, just a.
Okay.
I could, I can just see where it could be ping pong. And then, just, and a comment, it's not policy related, but practice. I would hope that, just like we're designing schools in the future to meet future learning, that our facilities are also in future minded and not back in maybe open showers in boys locker rooms, you know? And it would, I think, alleviate some of these things going forward. Just a overall observation.
Oh, you see, you're not.
That's not a policy.
That it goes in, okay.
Just that I hope that our, our building standards change a little bit as.
Evolve.
Evolve, yeah.
As we evolve in our understandings.
Any other reaction to help direct the policy subcommittee to their changes? Okay. Any final thoughts? Am I missing anything? It's quiet, everyone's tired. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Mari?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.